Good evening. I'd like to reconvene the meeting of the St. Mary's County Board of Education for Wednesday, August 31st, 2022. We will begin with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's see. First up, may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
You have a second?
I have a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. We will begin with Dr. Smith and Manalisa's update.
Yeah. August 31st?
August 31st.
Last day of August. Right after we met last, early August, and then we had a special session where we went and we approved the appointment of Principal Dunbar at Spring Ridge Middle School. But right before that, on that Saturday, we had a really wonderful Title I Parent and Family Engagement Conference at Green Holly School. Well over 250 people attending. A really fantastic opportunity for learning and to show support for educators and to have supplies for kids. Again, a great partnership with the NAACP, with the local library, St. Mary's County Library, with St. Mary's County Government. Really, really, really an incredible day. And certainly highlights the work of Dr. Kelly Hall, who has just joined us, and Charlotte Woodley. All the different ways that we pull our community together to get ready for the opening of school. What a great, what a great day and event. So, all of the pulling together, I know we have a back-to-school presentation, but it's so important to recognize that when you are welcoming back, I think currently 17,000, almost 700 students, and you have 2,300 employees, so a good 20,000 people occupying 30 buildings, it takes a lot of people to get that ready to go. Maintenance had multiple projects over the summer that they were all able to complete and ready for the opening of school operations, made sure that all of the larger tasks and the deep cleaning and the moving of furniture was all done. Design and construction, Ms. Liana was over in there, and you can see this is at Mechanicsville Elementary Schools. They were preparing for their open house to welcome back parents. Now, that, that surface is a temporary surface, correct? But it's, right now, it's down. So, it's, it's, it's a rug. So, Ms. Liana was there vacuuming it, getting it ready while she's talking on her cellphone, while she's coordinating. They do it all. These people are rock stars. Capital planning, next week, we're going to be having our capital improvement plan where we're talking about the exponential growth of cost and timelines for availability of supplies. It really takes some very diligent people to make sure that all this work gets done and gets done in the, in the schedule that we've put forth, capital planning. Food service, oh my goodness, you know, welcoming back all of these kids, making sure that everything is ready, making sure that all the point of service is ready, making sure that the meals are perfect for our kids, they're fantastic. Information technology, we were all reminded yesterday at the conclusion of the day how important information technology is when somebody hit a fiber optic cable line in another state and wiped out Maryland, Virginia-
And Delaware.
And Delaware. Breeze line. If you have them as your home service provider, yes. I think that's, I do. I've certainly spent a long time on the phone waiting to speak with them. But we're reminded how dependent we are on technology. So luckily, they were able to rectify and get everything back up and running by 9:30 last night, so we were ready to open schools today. But boy, it definitely brings home that we are very reliant on technology. And beyond technology, transportation, our bus drivers, our contractors, our bus attendants, all of the staff that we employ as a system to make sure that the buses go where they need to go and pick up the kids that they need to pick up, and more importantly, drop off the kids at the end of the day. What a, what a really wonderful opening, an incredible group. Facilities and athletics, that's the Chopticon High School new observation-
Press box.
Press box for their, for their stadium. It's beautiful. We're going to do an official welcoming event, not this week, but next week. And that's the floor at Great Mills High School that was completely refinished and the new, the Hornet logo put on there, and that's Principal Dothert and Coach Tubby Smith coming back and spending time with all of us. Truly, you know, a great, a great man who has given great service to all of us here and across the United States. That's, that's the supporting services side of the house. On this side of the house, the Division of Instruction, so that's Curriculum Instruction, Student Services, Special Education. We already gave a shout-out to EEA, Equity Engagement and Early Access Assessment and Accountability, all the systems. People worked all summer long to get ready for the welcoming back events for new teachers, for all staff. All staff underwent professional development as they were preparing for the opening of school. It takes, it takes a great many hands to do all that work. And sometimes, in our excitement for the first few days of school, we forget about what, what's happening in, in this building to get everybody ready and make sure that the work is meaningful. And then, you know, finally, school staff. I mean, oh my gosh. Administrative support staff. And that's, that's, that's everybody. That's the, that's the secretaries, the registrars, peer educators, all the people that are there solving problems as they, as they come up and getting ready. The counselors, to make sure that all of our schedule is correct and the class lists are, that are correct. The nurses, because from day one, we are doing our visits, day one, and we saw our kids going to see the nurse, day one. And they're there to, you know, to kind of help kids get ready for the, the school year. Safety and security staff, making sure that the front is manned, as well as doing perimeter checks on buildings, making sure we can be as safe as we possibly can. And obviously, our administrators, our principals and assistant principals and all the work that they've done. So thank you to all of them. And then finally, just our incredible teachers. It can't be said enough about what the, the teaching staff in St. Mary's County, what kind of climate they create for themselves and for their students and in their buildings. It really is, it really is very special. So as you, as you hear stories about all of the things that aren't right in the world, I urge you to go into our Twitter feed and see the things that our teachers are doing with, with students. It's, it's pretty amazing. And that's the new band director up at, up at Chopticon. That's the entire staff of Leonardtown Elementary School. That's the staff at Oakville Elementary School on the first day when Mrs. Bailey and I were doing our visits. They're all wearing their 80s colors. I felt very comfortable. It was good. But we still have opportunities. If you're looking at all of this and you're saying to yourself, "Boy, boy, I want to be part of that," we still have opportunities. They're dwindling. The opportunities are dwindling, so if you're, you know, get there quickly. I know that we need a pre-K teacher, we need an art teacher, I think we need two kindergarten teachers, I think we need two or three elementary teachers, two secondary math, two English, secondary English teachers, and a handful of special education teachers. But there is opportunity. So please, if you know of anybody that might be interested, go to, go to www.smcps.org, hit the "Join Our Team," see it's there, fill out an application. Even if you don't currently hold certification, if you have a bachelor's degree, we will still be contacted and we'll talk to you about what your goals are and whether or not you could find a meaningful place and profession with St. Mary's County Public Schools. And all the people that we first highlighted in fiscal services, we need accountants and payroll specialists, because nothing gets done without the funding to do it. Building service staff, bus assistants and drivers, computer support specialists, food service staff, maintenance staff, media clerks, peer educators, secretaries, and teacher apprentices. When Dr. Marr wrote the LEEDs grant, we wrote for 20 teacher apprentices. These are people that we'd hire as peer educators who would spend half of their day in classrooms supporting teachers and supporting students, and then half of their day observing, interacting, and furthering their pursuit of a teaching degree. So it's a really great opportunity. We have several vacancies still available for that. I ran across the, the teacher apprentice at Hollywood Elementary School, I guess, yesterday. She was coming in to support a new teacher. It was, it's fantastic. So there are a lot of opportunities. So here we are. We are in, we, we opened schools. We got through our first three days. They were exciting and eventful. We've come back this week. It's a full week, so I would anticipate that the little ones are going to be really quite exhausted by the time Friday rolls around. You have to build that stamina back up. But we do have a three-day weekend coming up. Next week is ANS for Us, a new teacher seminar in the evening, where we'll have, I think, 170 bodies in that, in that meeting, which is going to be great. Week four, we have a board meeting. Week five, we have an early dismissal for Fair Day, an early dismissal on Thursday, and there's no school for kids on Friday. It's a professional day, collaborative planning for teachers and schools. And then we get to, by the, by the time we get to the end of this month, we will be six weeks in to this, this year. You know, the 22nd marks the halfway point of the first marking period. So a lot of stuff going on, all fantastic. Really can't say enough about the, the staff in every facet of the school system really doing everything that needed to be done to get the schools open. And so, we do, as we have for the last several years, we have parents send pictures of their children as they're getting ready to board the bus. And so if you'll indulge me, we have one minute of a video that is really just too darn cute.
St. Mary's County Public Schools welcomes over 17,000 students returning and starting school this year. Not only are we welcoming students back, but also the hard-working staff that works tirelessly to provide a quality education to your students. Working together with parents and community, this year is going to be the best. Welcome back.
They are adorable. They are truly adorable. Especially that one person. Which one? Yeah. So, so ends the superintendent's portion of the report. This is a picture, and I'll let our student member of the board explain what it is.
Okay. So, good evening, everyone. This is a picture from Leonardtown High School's Senior Sunrise Event that took place on the first morning of school this year. I was there, and I'm in the picture somewhere. If you can try and play Where's Waldo instead of, actually, it'd be Where's Monosa. But I would just like to begin by saying thank you to everyone who put all the work into coming back into school this year. This is the first year we've come back, like, almost completely normally, you could call it, since the pandemic began. And I, I think we're doing pretty well. And I would also like to say that I hope that everyone has had a great first six days of school, staff and students alike. I'm really proud of SMCPS for the excitement that I've seen surrounding learning and the back-to-school environment for the past week, because usually students are, you know, kind of upset that their summer is over. But everyone is, like, really happy to see each other, and that was just really nice. And I hope everyone's adjusting well and feeling refreshed and prepared to dive in, work hard, and enjoy learning for the coming school year. But I would also like to assure students that if their first six days haven't gone as smoothly as you might have hoped for, it'll absolutely be better soon. You'll get into the groove of things, adjust to the new environment and new classes, and you will succeed. And if you need help reaching that point, please don't hesitate, hesitate to reach out to your teachers for some extra help with their subject. I know I've already done that. Reach out to administrators with any questions or concerns. Absolutely go see your guidance counselor or, or school psychologist if you're feeling overwhelmed, struggling a little bit, or need any help at all. And to speak a bit to that, even as a senior in high school, I felt incredibly shaky on the first day of school, because although I was excited to see everyone again, I was also scared to see everyone again. And the nerves are normal, so please don't let it stop you from getting involved in your school community. It's never too late. I don't care if you're in sixth grade or if you're a senior in high school just like me, it is never too late to get involved, and it'll make your experience 10 times better. So going to football games with your friends, participating in lunch events, dances, and more, I promise it's all very worth it, and you should make the most of your time in school. And then, in other news, I'm very excited to share that Dr. Smith and I will be visiting schools in the coming months. I'm thrilled to have the opportunity to learn from elementary school students who have been through so much adversity already in their educational careers through the pandemic and so many other things. And I'm so excited to help them learn a little bit more about how to make the most of that educational experience. And then I'm also very excited to visit our secondary schools and have some meaningful conversations with my peers about their experiences in SMCPS and as students in general, and learn something about what we as a system can do to further promote their well-being and success as students. And then, lastly, I'm absolutely thrilled to work with secondary students on the Superintendent's Student Leadership Advisory Council, which allows us to directly work with the superintendent to voice student opinions and experiences about what SMCPS can do to improve student environments and what students can do to help ourselves along the way. So I'm excited to get in the year. It's been great so far, and I'm looking forward to it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have anything else to add?
No, I have no rejoinder to that.
Okay.
Just that, we're trying, we are, that's like 20 elementary school visits that we're going to be scheduling just in the first part of the year, on top of the secondary. And Mrs. Suara has a very aggressively academic senior schedule.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes, you do. Yes, you do.
Hopefully, your AP study period is when elementary schools are in session.
No.
I don't have AP study.
No, it's not.
No, we're, no, we're, we're cutting deals with, we're cutting deals with their teachers. It's good.
It's all good.
Okay. So we don't have any recognitions tonight or public hearing. Any public comment?
No, ma'am.
Okay. So I will move on to the consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda, which today consists of the approval of minutes for August 10th, 2022, approval of minutes of August 17th, 2022, personnel, teachers, personnel administrative and supervisory, professional services contract, Department of Special Education, contract for PSAT, NMSQT assessments, and the SAT SD assessment, Imagine Learning Renewal, American Reading Company, IRLA funds, Department of Safety and Security, camera, system, equipment, and licensing, and finally, the Department of Special Education Professional Services Contract, teacher of the visually impaired.
Do I have a second?
My second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Motion is carried. Let's see. We have two action items tonight. The first one, Ms. Liana, we have the Job Order Contract for Architectural Engineering Design.
JOC. And she's only doing one thing at a time tonight, so she's not, you're just, that's, you're presenting.
Yep, yep.
Very good.
I'm here to request approval of multiple awards for an indefinite quantity job order contract for architectural and engineering design consulting services with no individual task order to exceed $900,000 without additional Board of Education approval. A little bit of background, what is the purpose of a job order contract like this is to use it for existing construction of a school construction, any renovations, any additions, any remodelings that will be doing in the schools. How we utilize an architect for design and consulting services for architect, or engineering will be for feasibility studies, for peer reviews of work, for design and construction administration services throughout any CIP project, any project that will be done through a grant. We have different venues now that we'll be using this contract. And how I put it out in the RFP was two tiers. After, you know, researching how was the best way to utilize a, a contract like this, we came out, aligned it with our FEB policy to where the, the number, it's a $2 million construction budget. So a tier one would be for projects under $2 million, a tier two would be over $2 million. And the idea is that it's a one-year contract with an options for three additional year renewals. The scope of the project or the, the service with the architect or engineer will be determined once we, we jump into the project, when we know what we're going to be using it with, and it'll be individually catered to the projects. But we have in our pipeline on the CIP, on any grant that we have identified lately, we have a lot of systemics, we have limited renovations coming in, we have heating and air conditioning, we have roof, a roof replacement in the pipeline, we have window replacement projects, we have interior building renovations, security vestibles, and then we also have the, those side investigations or feasibilities that we have to do to make sure we have enough funds for their CIP. Why I came up with the number of $900,000 is based on what we have in the CIP in the lineup for the next, you know, if I'm asking you to award this for a year with option of three-year renewals, it's between four and five years that we're going to be using this. So we have in the FY '23, right now, I'm, I'm sitting and waiting to award the roof for, Green Holly, the half of the roof and half of the HVAC that I haven't done previously. Piney Point HVAC, it's also in the pipeline, waiting to be awarded. We have Great Mills Roof, half of it that I did not do the recent years. We also have coming soon, Chopticon High School Limited Renovation, that might not qualify for this type of project, because I put a threshold of, you know, $900,000. But it all depends, you know, we can use it for more investigation that we will need for that project to get ready. And then on FY '26, we have already lined up some feasibility studies for Lexington Park Roof and for Ridge HVAC. So that's why the numbers are smaller. So that's how I came up with a number that might look high in, in, for these type of purposes, but it's what's going to get us rolling for, to bundle these projects. It's getting very difficult to analyze the best architect to do our projects. We've always had, like, a pool of architects that we know, they are getting more and more interested in working with us, but there are very talented people out there that only focuses on, on education or that the majority of the work is done in education. The FEB policy for us says that we start on a pre-qualification, then the expression of interest, you know, they, they submit their pre-qualification, and that's how they tell us that they want to work with us. We evaluate their technical qualifications, and then we shortlist whoever is the most high-qualified and experienced firm. And then af, after that, we choose the, we select an architect or an engineer, and then we negotiate a fee after. We advertise on eMaryland Marketplace, and we got 150 vendors hit through eMa. Out of those, 150, 16 proposals were received. And in the past, I've only asked for technical, because we want to hire the best architect to do the work. This time, we did best value, where it was 70% for technicality and 30% for cost. So we put some percentage there to help us evaluate who is the best value for us. 14 of them were responsible and responsive leaders, and 10 firms were shortlisted as most qualified in different categories or services. We gave the highest consideration to the K to 12 experience, and then they, we asked them to submit their hourly rates right away, so we could give them that 30%. But the majority of it, it's based on quality. We have the three tiers, tier one, tier one and two, and then just tier two. And how we put it out is Pensavale, we're recommending for tier one. Then we have two engineering firms, the, the ones in, in red, Alban, and Restoration Engineering, being different, one is more of a roof consultant envelope, and the other one is more MEP engineer. Then we have five architects in the one and two tier, and then we have two architects in the two tier. And again, we've worked with Pensavale before. This was a smaller con firm that was bought about one or two years ago by a bigger firm called Prime, and they have experience in, in, in St. Mary's and Arando, Calvert-Fredrick, several public schools. The five architects that I'm recommending is Collmore Architects, who has, have experience in St. Mary's, Frederick, Montgomery, Prince George's, and Baltimore City, GWWO, which we've worked with them before for Hollywood, and they also have experience with Anarando, Baltimore, Calvert, several in Maryland, the state of Maryland. SEI, who are, we're working with them in several projects lately, window replacements more and limited renovation in Lady Marshallden, but they also work extensively in Calvert, Washington, Baltimore City. TCA, who had worked with us in the past, and they have not worked lately, they also work with other jurisdictions in Maryland, Anarando, Howard, Baltimore, Montgomery, and they're basically exclusively, exclusively educational architects. And then WGM, which we work with them often, and they are also in Anarando, Ken, Queen Anne's, and Calvert. And then these two are the engineers, also for tier one and two, which is Alban. They, they've worked with not only all these architects that I mentioned, but they also work with us independently, and they work with other jurisdictions like Calvert and Charles. And REI, same thing that I mentioned before, that there are a very good roof and building envelope that we've worked with before. And tier two are bigger companies that not necessarily will be interested in working with us for smaller projects, that their portfolio is much bigger, their revenue is much bigger, so I'm recommending them for tier two, which are Cracktree, and I cannot pronounce that, Roba Associates, and Queen Anne's Architects. They are bigger, Queen Anne being more focused on Virginia, but they also have Prince George's and Baltimore County and Baltimore City. And I, this time I recommend that the Board of Education approve this agenda item as presented, and I, I am open for questions.
Do you have any questions?
Can I go not first? I think I have something, but I don't know yet.
Okay.
All right. Any questions?
Ma'am?
No questions. Thank you.
I really appreciate that you have done the work to bring these forward while we don't have anything for them at this moment. Having them all pre-qualified, as you have done with some of the other work, some of the other entities that we have used in the past, really allows the system to be thoughtful about, about who is the best firm for the particular project. And it means that you are not having to rush through things, and, and they, you know, know what to expect when they're coming to work with us and for us. So very much appreciate that you put so much time and thought into this. Very happy that there were so many individuals or so many companies that decided to, to apply and to be part of this. So I look forward to bringing some of these forward. And as you've indicated, we have worked with a number of these firms already in the past, but it's nice to see some new names as well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. I do have a question. First of all, thank you for presenting all of this, because I know that stuff like this is kind of what happens behind the scenes, and students don't really think about it. But like the HVAC stuff, LHS is so cold, like, all the time.
Oh, don't say that.
Yeah.
Oh my gosh.
You have just touched the third rail.
And that's honestly gotten a lot better this week, so, I don't know, it's all thanks to you guys, but, um, I did have a question, um, so like, how do you decide what, um, what firm is like right for a project? Because, like, is it just based on size and experience or are there like other factors that kind of determine it? And then, um, what, or like which firms were you thinking would be right for, um, the projects that were, um, proposed for, uh, fiscal year twenty-three?
So, that is a very good question and it's becoming very difficult because we have a lot of talented architects there. Um, I, how I lined up these ten firms basically was, we put in the R F P what we always ask them for the technical parts, their experience in K to twelve. So they have to show me three projects that are similar to the ones that we have in our pipeline, um, cause you, you know, you wanna line them up and com- compare apples with apples. Um, I also ask them for their resumes, um, and then we give them some numbers to evaluate, you know, their experience, who they use as their consultant, sub consultants, because the architects also have engineers depending on the project, they are gonna hire an, an M E P or a roof consultant, so who they have there, who we, we know is good, um, and everybody is good, but we also like to minimize errors, minimize the work that we do here of revising, reviewing the drawings, make sure that the change orders are minimized because they look the whole project more in depth and the quality controls more. Um, so we look at those things too, uh, references, who they've worked with, who with the, the other jurisdictions, are they happy with them? Uh, because everything looks in paper good, but they have to make sure that, um, they, they, their, the other, uh, jurisdictions that I've worked with them have, have a good experience. Um, those are basically the things that we do, we look at their financials and that's how I determine in this case, who has a bigger revenue and, and not, to make sure, you know, I'm not gonna put them on a tier one, that they, they're gonna be too busy for us, we're too far, um, and we're, it's not gonna be interested for them to come and do a security vestibule. Um, so, um, that's, those are the things that I look at, um, that they don't have any, any, anything, anything pending with, um, any protest in, you know? So, that's how I lined up all these ten contract, uh, firms. How I would hire from these ten for the pro- the next projects in the F Y twenty-three, I've already discussed that in the office, that I'm gonna have them compete on prices because I know they are all capable of doing it, now it's gonna be who can give me better, uh, price. Um, I think it's gonna be very close because how I gave them the thirty percent in the price proposals was eliminating, I, I made a whole complicated, uh, matrix about who was this, the lowest price per, it's by hour, now project architect, project engineer, cat, um, uh, principal, and who, who will give me the lowest price will give more points. And who was more expensive gave me less points. So that's how I get, came of trying to get the best value and for S M C P S.
Gotcha, thank you.
The, uh, you know, we don't, we don't have an unlimited amount of money down here and we only get to, we only get to do a lot of these projects once.
Mm-hmm.
So, I definitely need to take you, our first elementary school that we need to visit is Mechanicsville.
Yeah.
So you can see what happens when you have to do a, a multi-phase construction project over several school years, um, where you partition and you move, the, the architect has to really put something together and we always look for some, a little pop, something that really kind of stands out and kind of is, is a really interesting element of it within a price point. Um, the engineering has to be right. Uh, H V A C systems are, I, I can't even begin to tell you how complex they are and when you look at all the different systems that are now operating in schools, um, it's exceptionally, uh, technical work. But when you see them onsite moving and choreographing all of that, you'll see that it's, it's an incredible amount of work on the front end, but it pays gigantic dividends when hands get to work and work gets done on time. I have been in the middle of construction projects where things didn't get done on time and the things that got done didn't, didn't get done the way that they should have been and you're forever chasing the, 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 the problems, the things that weren't addressed in punch. So, um, I'm just very thankful to have you and your due diligence.
Thank you.
So, so just for, for your, so we started Mechanicsville Construction at the, in June of twenty twenty-two, right? But this piece that we are looking at now for the consultants, that was done, what, almost two years prior?
Yeah.
Right, so we need, we need them to, we need to give them the project, tell them what we want, then they tell us what they would do and then we go to bid with, you know, construction and all of that. So this, this is like the initial phase of a C I P project. So, cause the money comes in different buckets, so to speak.
And the cost estimates from two years ago.
Right, exactly.
Aren't necessarily the real.
Right, aren't necessarily what we really get.
Costs, no, so there's, I mean, there's that.
We have the cost estimates from three months ago.
No.
Aren't really what we get now. So, so the, so these are, these are the nuts and bolts people that tell us how we
You just wait till we do capital improvement plan next, next.
Next week, right, yes.
Next time we get together, that's, we're doing a capital improvement plan for the next five years.
That's right.
It's good stuff.
Great.
So, okay, anyone have any other questions? All right, may I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve multiple awards under S M C P S twenty twenty-two dash oh six D S S dash D S to all with.
D C.
Oh, I'm sorry, D C to Alban Engineering Incorporated, Collmore Architects, Crabtree, Roba and Associates, G W W O Architects, Pensavale A Studio of Prime A E Group Incorporated, Quinn Evans Architect, Restoration Engineering Incorporated, Small and E M R, Ilkovich Architects, T C A Architects, and Willa Gottman Masick Architects with no individual task order to exceed nine hundred thousand without additional Board of Education approval as funding permits during the term of the contract.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in paper?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have Ms. Long and Mr. Zerbiak. Our policy, and see, we already had the public hearing, I don't think we had any additional public comment that had ever come in on this one either.
No, I've, I've done this before, I really have.
Well, I saw that, I saw, there you go. Look at that. We have to think of Dr. Moore to actually make three quarters of the way here and then it always starts.
I am good, thank you.
Yes.
I am here this evening with Mr. Scott Zerbiak, Director of Special Education, to, um, we are presenting the second reading of Policy J H F A, um, our recommendations for the exclusion, physical restraint and seclusion policy. During the budget works, excuse me, during the B O E meeting work session on July twentieth, we presented the first reading and then the public hearing was held on August tenth and there were no public comments.
All right, the revisions were made because of Senate Bill seven zero five and House Bill one two five five and the bill essentially prohibited the use of seclusion in public school settings, the prohibited use of restraint as an intervention, prohibited the, um, use, uh, in, in an increase of the use of positive behavior intervention. In St. Mary's County, we use multi-tiered supports, M T S S. And also the state is now, um, um, looking at all of the data points, we're looking at all restraints being held, uh, in St. Mary's County, those that are taking place and we have to report that to the state, um, local as well as the state and to the government. And we, uh, have to develop plans for those students that have been restrained ten or more times.
The recommendation for a change to the title, exclusion and physical restraint, and we are removing seclusion. Um, the purpose, section one of the policy contains the purpose and again, uh, in the purpose statement, we are just removing the word seclusion to read, the purpose of this policy is to define the scope and context in which exclusion, physical restraint may be used. Section two is the policy statement, um, the poli- the, most of the policy statement remains the same with the exception of removing the word seclusion. And as we continue through the policy statement, you see, um, the word seclusion removed again and the addition of the last sentence, in some situations, protective or stabilizing devices may be appropriate to ensure the safety of students during transportation or is prescribed for medical needs. Continuing the policy statement, there are no further changes.
Okay, and most of the definitions have also stayed the same in policy, our behavior intervention plan, that's the plan that we meet as a team and provide a specific plan for those with behavioral needs, strategies, interventions that we would put in place. Um, we're also looking at exclusion and exclusion being those students that have been, um, moved from their instructional setting for a period of time, uh, we do wanna monitor that because they are missing, uh, access to their curriculum. Also, we look at the functional behavior assessment, the functional behavior assessment really being that assessment that we identify the function of the behavior, we look at the problems, uh, that exhibited in the behaviors, we look at the educational settings and the environment in which those, uh, behaviors are being taken place and we use all that data to develop an effective behavioral intervention plan. We did remove the use of mechanical restraint and mechanical restraint being a, um, something that would restrain a student from not being able to move, um, think about an ambulance, uh, when you're in the, uh.
Gurney.
Yeah, you can't move. So we are removing that, that is not a use and we have not used that in St. Mary's County public schools. The change, um, for physical restraint, we did make a definition change based on the new law and we did change the definition as stated in the law, a personal restriction that immobilizes or reduces the ability of a student to move the student's torso, arms, legs, or head freely. Uh, the protect- protective stapling de- device, we did not change, um, sometimes can be confused with mechanical restraint, it is not, um, it is like a seatbelt or a harness on a bus to transport a student and also a lot of that adaptive equipment is prescribed by health, uh, officials. And, uh, we did remove the definition of seclusion from the policy.
And then section four of the policy, um, speaks to the evaluation, review and updates, there's no changes to that. And then the recommended action is that the Board of Education approve Policy J H F A as presented. Any questions?
We have these questions.
Um, don't have any questions, thank you.
No questions.
Mary?
No questions, thank you for bringing this forward, so we are being in compliance with state and federal law.
No questions.
Okay.
With that, may I have a motion?
I move. I, I move that the Board of Education approve Policy J H F A as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion is carried, thank you very much.
Uh, the information on the back to school item, we're gonna have Dr. Maureen Montgomery, Deputy Superintendent of Schools and Dr. Jeff Morris, Strategic Office, the Office of Strategic Initiatives.
And this, uh, presentation really bookends, uh, your opening, uh, presentation as well.
Monica stole my thunder.
So, yeah.
Of the L H S sunrise senior.
I saw you there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was there.
She was.
It was an unplanned visit.
Dr. Maureen had a senior sunrise.
Yes.
Right?
Yes, we're gonna have to make sure the, for the next several years, we're, we get pictures from each one of them, it's just that Leonard Towne did a very nice, I was able to steal the picture off a post.
Brian?
Okay.
I think a lot of students did get together though, like before school, because it's so much of pictures.
The challenge was the senior sunset because by that time, like the sunset's like eight thirty. It's like, oh yeah.
Much better than senior sunrise.
Struggle to find the senior sunset going.
Yeah.
So here we are, the, uh, as we said, we're gonna just highlight the, the back to school that we, as Dr. Smith said, uh, started last week. And, uh, the approach we've taken for this presentation is that a picture is worth a thousand words, so you're gonna see very few words on these slides, but a lot of great pictures and many of, uh, which you've already seen this evening, Dr. Smith commented on all the preparation that happened over the summer, uh, to get our schools ready to open, including renovation projects and cleaning and maintenance, um, and really, you know, getting, uh, again, Mechanicsville Elementary's renovation that is happening at quite a rapid pace to get those classrooms ready for opening this school year. Um, and of course, the transportation that gets ready to transport all of our students and every route was covered and every, there were bus drivers on every route getting them to and from school, we're very fortunate and thankful for our bus drivers who do that every day for our students. Um, and look at all these pictures, this is the work that our teachers do in the summer to get ready for the school year, so we have, uh, new teacher orientation that kicks off with, as we said, over a hundred and seventy, uh, teachers hired this year and, and the end of last year. Uh, we have the professional days that happen the week before students arrive, uh, you see here, pictures from all variety of staff positions, including operations, that is in the top right corner, um, and the apprentices that Dr. Smith mentioned in the bottom right, uh, and then moving around, there's a great welcome, uh, uh, that happens at Spring Ridge or Middle School that you see in the bottom left where, uh, the new teachers walk through the, the veteran staff and it's a just great celebration, so, um, and then of course, we welcomed, uh, some new leaders.
We have, um, six new building leaders, um, this year and you can see all of their pictures there and what the really neat thing about these leaders is that six out of six of them have really done their entire career with St. Mary's County Public Schools. They've been teachers and special education teachers and they've been I R Ts, teacher leaders in the system, all of them have been an assistant principal, um, Sandy Emre Ali at the charter school was, um, an academic dean and now that, now she's the director of the charter school. Katie Cordicrack, same thing, has been through the system, she's, um, assigned to, uh, Captain Walter Francis Duke. And then Mr. Dothard, B J Dothard, he's principal of Great Mills and Aaron Durenzo is the principal of Hollywood Elementary School. Jamie Copsy is a Leonard Towne High School graduate and now the principal of Leonard Towne High School and he has done his entire career with us. And then Chuck Dunbar is the new principal of Spring Ridge Middle School and he attended Spring Ridge Middle School and he graduated from Great Mills High School and he's done his career, much of his, most of his career with us, not all, he did take a little bit of break, um, elsewhere, he started elsewhere, but then came back to us. So all of them, it's really, I just think it's really, um, great that we make that commitment to grow our own and this is a great representation of that. And all of them, we, they've just done an amazing job opening their schools. It is probably one of the most nerve-wracking things for a new principal, the first thing you're thinking about all summer, you're worried about that opening faculty meeting and what you do for your teachers the first five days, because that really will define your year. And our leaders put together the most amazing presentations, um, focusing on so many different things, um, Aaron Durenzo was replacing a twenty-year leader in that school, so imagine that if you're going in for the first time for that staff who, every single person in that building minus the few people that she hired this summer, um, you know, were hired by this former person who had been there forever, so just, just did an amazing job with all of that.
Mister Dothard, Principal Dothard at Great Mills did a wonderful, and he recognizing that the building had been led for almost two decades by a Hyboll.
Right, right, he did, he came in and acknowledged that.
Tracy Hyboll and then Jake Hyboll, you know, that really is, that's, that's something, that's really something.
Yeah, and he really, and he did a great job establishing his vision for the school, you know, he challenged the staff to have an individualized plan for every single student as they were graduating from high school. And, you know, what, what was, what were they gonna do? And he's actually gonna use the Naviance platform to help to develop that plan, so he'll have his goal, his assistant principals will, his I R Ts, and his, hopefully his teachers can, um, also be a part of that. So, but every one of them, I could talk about something unique that every one of them did because they really did an amazing job planning those first, first, um, days with staff. And then they also, along with our other leaders, planned open houses. So what you see here, pictures of open house, um, the one of, the one right in the middle is the Leonard Towne High School ninth grade laptop distribution where they were transferring, the eighth grade, they came in, dropped off the laptop that they'd used in middle school and then they picked up their ninth grade laptop that they're gonna have in high school and lots of great pictures with students, you know, learning their buildings and walking in. in and meeting their teachers. And we've got some backpacks and school supplies that were being given out in some of those pictures, so really great opportunity to come in. And one thing I do want to mention, I know we've done a blast of this on social media and everything else, about the meal applications. We set up meal benefits, applications, kiosks at all of our open houses. We want families to make sure they're coming in and completing those forms, because for the last two years, students have had, they haven't had to complete those applications to get the meals in the schools. But now, they do have to complete those applications, so we really want families to make sure they go in and fill out those applications. They have until the last day in October, is that what they do? Last day in October to fill them out, so get those meal applications in. And then, the first day of school. So we welcomed, it says, over 17,500 students, but this morning, when Dr. Smith ran the enrollment, we are at 17,702 students. So we have, you know, we've got a large number of students, pre-K through 12. And one of the big highlights is our pre-K students are all now full day in all of our classes, so they were absolutely adorable going into visiting our first graders on their first, I mean, our pre-K kids on their first day of school. Their first day of school was Friday, everybody else started on the Wednesday before. So really, great pictures of kids just coming in, and it always surprises me every single year how fast they just get right back into the routine. I mean, Monasa, I'm sure you're seeing that at Leonard Towne High School, that everybody is just kind of jumping back in, going into classes, the bell rings, they get up, they go somewhere else. So it really does amaze me how fast our staff gets the students back and focused on what they're supposed to do at school. And there's the picture of the senior sunrise at Leonard Towne High School that Monasa already talked about.
If there's one from Chopticon, and you send it, I'll make sure that I include it in the next
It's fine, it's fine. I'll, I'll make sure I flood you with some
Please do.
Braves pictures at some point.
Oh, yes.
I'm going to the football game this Friday night, so I'll get some pictures of the football game.
Sorry.
And before, because Dr. Mar is going to take over, I just want to thank Dr. Mar, because he is the one that goes poring through all the Twitter feeds and finds these pictures and pulls together this fantastic PowerPoint, so I appreciate him so much.
Well, and I give a nod to the schools who put these out for the community so that we can find them. So, really, the reason that you're seeing these beautiful pictures is because they, they're, they're taken on the spot by our administrators and by your visits on those first days as well. And Dr. Montgomery has said it so clearly, if you look at these, these are all the first days. Some of these were taken at 7:30 in the morning, and students are right there engaged in learning right from the beginning. In fact, Ms. Allen, you may recognize the one in the top right from Leonard Towne Middle School that, that day, so. And then, of course, I just want to remind parents and families about the resources that are on our website. Many of them have already accessed them on the Students and Families tab. It goes right to the back-to-school resources, and many of those things, they might have already, you know, used to find their school bus or get the, the school lunch applications. But also, there's tons of information, how to get to Schoology for the parents who need to log in and, and see their, their students' accounts, as well as all the other resources that are there. And of course, on the front page of our website is the link to the meal benefit form that Dr. Montgomery referenced as well. So we've had a great start to the year. It is really great to be back to this process of welcoming our students back in, in such a vibrant way, so thank you all.
I have a question. On the school benefit meal forms, are they, are they phone-ready too? So if I want to access it on my cellphone, I don't necessarily need a laptop computer.
That's a great question.
You can, you can enter all the information, but ultimately, you're going to have to provide some kind of a physical signature, and it has related salary documents and/or, you know, where you, where you live. So, so you can, you can certainly enter a portion of that information on your phone. And then, what we, food service staff and, and building staff have been fantastic, they'll, they'll reach out to you and they'll help you complete the entire application.
Because I'm just thinking, some people, you know, everyone does everything on their, on their cellphones now. So if someone doesn't have a laptop or use their child's laptop to do it, whether they could do it.
There's a QR, there's a QR code everywhere that takes you right through to the, to the beginning of the form itself, so don't miss out on that benefit.
And you can get a paper copy also.
Yeah, yeah. And so, and
Because meals are not free this year.
Right, meals are not free this year.
Like, we're not, we're not saying that, meals are not free this year.
Free and reduced meals are available, as they always have been, for those who are eligible.
But not, they're not
They're not universal.
Probably by the student population, as they have been for the last two years.
We need your applications, so that's why we're trying to say it every chance we get.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you, was it Mary Ann? Who, who did the one-minute video?
That was done by Mary Ann and her team.
Mary Ann and her team.
Sorry, just got a couple of folks who work with it.
Yeah, so the Be Your Best You's, there was a great one. Each one of the high schools had Be Your Own, Be Your Best You, with fantastic senior leaders helping people understand how to navigate the buildings, and they, they shot and did all of that. Marian Williams and, and production folks working under her charge.
Was it on TikTok?
It wasn't on. We'll be, we'll be talking before the end of the thing. It'll probably be more, there's a lot of unflattering video of me floating around there, and some people stitch it together and such a thing. That'll probably be, it'll end up on TikTok, me falling down some stairs or acting foolish or dressed in a pink bunny suit.
I was going to say.
Yeah.
Can't forget that pink bunny suit.
No, there's, there's a little bit, there's, oh, there's, there's me in a white tuxedo with, from the night when I was principal, that's pretty entertaining, too. There's, there's a lot of stuff. There's a lot of incriminating
We may have to go searching.
That was like before the internet was big, right?
Yeah, yes, yes.
We had to find, like, the Kodak pictures.
Somebody had to develop that film.
That's right.
How great was that?
All right, Mrs. Weaver, do you have any type of board report?
No.
I do.
Fantastic.
Yes.
I do.
No, go ahead.
And I attended three vitally important events for educators, parents, and students. One I attended was the Title I Parent and Family Engagement Conference, and it was called Stronger Together, Homeschool and Community. It was held from 8:00 a.m. to 2:45 p.m. at Green Holly School on a Saturday, and the attendance was tremendous. The program was funded by Title I, and before I begin my report, I want to give a tremendous congratulations to Charlotte Woodley and the Department of Equity, Engagement, and Early Access. She planned this huge and highly successful community event. It was well-attended, and there were over 250 people there on a Saturday, starting at 8:00 in the morning. Community support was overwhelming with volunteers, guest speakers, presenters, county government services, community organizations. Thank you, Mrs. Woodley. Transportation, breakfast, lunch, and childcare was provided free of charge. Age-appropriate learning activities and fun activities were facilitated by SMCPS teachers. As I walked around the childcare areas, I could see that the students were busy learning. These activities were interesting to the students. The students were also completely engaged during a present, presentation by a professional clown, who was well-versed in getting students involved in fun activities. There were smiles on their faces. Opportunities were available throughout the conference for families to make connections with principals from the Title I schools. Mrs. Thorntonson, principal at George Washington Carver, Dr. Skow, principal at Lexington Park School, and all the Title I principals were there. Additional opportunities were available to connect with a variety of community partners. The Harry Londonberg School of Seamanship transported a bus to their students to help the entire day, and they did an incredible job, thanks to them. The St. Mary's County Health Department was there, and you could get registered for your COVID-19 vaccine. They also had books for students, and such as Why Don't Animals Smoke? They don't want bad breath. That was just one of the reasons. They had another book on Stop the Spread of Germs, Winning with Asthma, and much more. A lot of their information was in English and Spanish. And oh, by the way, the conference, the guest speakers, a lot of the presentations were done in English and Spanish, because we have a lot of Spanish-speaking students in our school. And the Health Department had three tables loaded with information. A big shout-out to the NAACP 7025. They did a magnificent job of donating 500 backpacks with grade-level supplies. They also had a table with additional school supplies, such as glues, pencils, crayons, erasers, rulers, scissors, notebooks, and notepads. And they also provided information on the role of the NAACP, such as their scholarship fundraising effort, political action, health and economic development, and more. So a huge thanks to Dr. Janice Wildthaw, Margaret Forrest, Anne Marie Abel, Lynn Newkirk, and many more NAACP volunteers who were there all day. Then, A New Hope Family therapists were there, in case people needed psychological services, where they could get assessments. They deal with family court order situations. The Willows Recreation Center, they talked about their after-school program for elementary, middle, and high school students. The WIC program, Women's Infants and Children, which is a nutrition program for women, infants, and children, that gives extra food, tips on healthy eating, breastfeeding, and referrals to other services. The Community Mediation of St. Mary's County was there, and they're always volunteering their services to the school system if we need mediation with student-to-student issues or whatever's going on. They are always willing to come in to mediate and to train students in mediation. So they were there, and they were saying, if you have a beef with your neighbor, roommate, business tenant, landlord, family, or other conflicts in your life, they are there to help. So help is available. The League of Women Voters were there. They were helping people register to vote. The School Attendance Matters watchdog was there. He was patrolling the conference to remind parents and students the importance of being in school, being on time, and being ready to learn. It's difficult to learn if you're not in school. Building Bridges, another organization which strives to improve communities, and thanks to Patrice Campbell, who was there. The Three Oaks Homeless Shelter was there, and their mission there was to educate the participants that they do not have to be homeless, that they stress prevention, crisis intervention, and stabilization. Also, Maryland Physicians Care. They say they accept Medicaid, so they gave out information on staying safe, such as staying safe around lead paint. The Cove, I know many of you heard of the Cove team. They offer services on strengthening families, and they have classes every Thursday for the entire family, for parents and youth ages seven through 17. And they focus on positive communication, family bonding, refusal techniques for rick ski behavior, and more. Then, the Department of Social Services, the Maryland State Department of Education was there, and they came all the way down from Baltimore to see our program, and they said it is really the best in the state of Maryland.
I don't doubt that.
What we do with early access, access and engagement. The Judy Center Learning Hub was there, and they provide children for success in school and life. And the keynote speakers were Shawna King, who wrote a book on School Smart, is just, is more than just reading and writing, and she gave out those books for free. Amy Spadell, who's been at St. Mary's County many times, she was there again, and she's a regular, and she talked about empowering parents and families to help children and families succeed. So overall, it was a packed day, it was a successful day, and I thought I would go there for two or three hours, but I ended up staying there all day. It was so much fun. So overall, thanks to Kelly Hall, Director of Equity, Engagement, and Early Access, and also thanks to the entire department for their diligence and working collaboratively on the project with Mrs. Woodley. St. Mary's County is a county which values education, and I attended the Teacher and Appreciation and Back-to-School Supply Drive held at the Leonard Towne Wharf. So the mayor of Leonard Towne held that. On Saturday, August 25th, another Saturday event, I attended the drive. It was during the Leonard Towne Summer Musical Festival. The event's major sponsor was Jimmy Hayden, RE/MAX 100 and Homes for Heroes. They had special prize drawings with gifts totaling over $400 for our teachers and educators. So it was to support teachers and our support staff. So I thank the town of Leonard Towne for recognizing our teachers and support staff for the 2022 and 2023 school year, and thanks to Mayor Burris and the council members. Okay, and my last one is first day of school visits. On the first day of school, Deputy Superintendent Dr. Maureen Montgomery and I visited Esperanza, Great Mills, Greenview Knowles, Town Creek, and Green Holly. I was thrilled with the amount of work that was done over the summer to get our schools, grounds, and classroom ready for the first day of school. The buildings were immaculate. The floors were shining, and things were orderly and clean. The kids were happy, on task, smiling. It was a wonderful day. The students were busy at work, learning the rules, seeing old friends, and making new friends. So I want to thank the principals, support staff, and faculty. Dr. Smith already thanked her. The building service workers, operation, food and nutrition services, curriculum and instruction, design and construction, fiscal services, support services, technology, bus transportation, maintenance, equity engagement and early access, human resources, safety and security, special education, strategic planning and communications, parents, and all the community partners in the county who worked so hard to make sure our students would have a good school opening. So as I always say, St. Mary's County is a great place to live, work, and learn and raise a family. And I just love our community partners. They are always there to help, so thank them very much.
I'll, I'll be brief, I think. I, I visited, along with Dr. Mar, nine schools ranging from elementary, middle, and to high. Started out our day at Leonard Towne Middle School and ended it at Benjamin Banneker. Dr. Mar and I have been doing this for a number of years, and we have a very nice loop that we run. I just have to say that the, the calm and the focus that Dr. Mar and I witnessed on the very first day of school was really, really apparent. I think making the change to bring our pre-K students in for their first, for their orientation and then their first day, you know, separated from the very first day of school, meant that those long lines of, of crying parents and excited children
Were crying parents, not crying kids and excited parents.
Yeah, yeah. Were, you know, that was saved for another day, and I think that that was really helpful because it really allowed the, the students and the, and the staff to sort of get right into what they were doing for their older students, and then allowed them to really focus on their pre-K students. And such a difference this year, because those pre-K students are there for a full day, and that's a lot for those little guys. But I think it's going to really make a major difference in their readiness for kindergarten and onward, and I, and I applaud that. I also had an opportunity to interact with a number of the teaching apprentices that we have, and two, a principal. Every one of them talked about the teacher apprentices and what a great job. They were off and running, and there was, there was no task that was too much or too little for any one of them, and how thrilled the principals were to be able to have them in their buildings and to really, and really spoke to their desire to set them up with both new teachers to learn from, but also veterans as their mentors. And, and so I was really thrilled with that. Students and teachers from the very first day were engaged in meaningful learning. I, I was in the hallway at Leonard Towne High School at, at class change. I loved the fact that yet again, they were releasing freshmen two minutes early
Yeah, give them a chance.
So that they could kind of find their way without, without everyone else. But I have to tell you, there were administrators, there were teachers, there were, there were a lot of adult staff in the, in the hallways as students were, were moving through. And while, you know, granted, we have a number of students at, at Leonard Towne High School, it was not overwhelming, and, you know, me being somewhat height-challenged, I could, I can get moved around a little bit and did not experience any of that. So kudos to all the staff at Leonard Towne High School for all they were doing. And I have to give a shout-out to the Kudos to all the staff at Leonard Town High School for all they were doing. Um, and I have to give a shout out to the superintendent. Yes, yes. They were, um, but, but my experience was at Leonard Town High School for that one. A little bit of a challenge at Leonard Town Middle School, um, with the, the heat and humidity. Um, but kudos to the superintendent. For anyone who's wondering, Dr. Smith has, um, a full chart of every one of our sites. Um, and it is updated, um, quite frequently so that he knows at any particular moment. Um, are, are there issues? Where are the issues with H V A C and, and, um, staff are on top of it. We are. Like everyone else challenged by the supply chain issues. Um, but the work that, um. That is being done by, uh, our building service workers and by our maintenance staff to try to. Um, address those issues, uh, is really significant. And so my hat is off to them. Um, so for any parent or student who wonders, does the board really know what's going on? Yes, um, we do. Uh, and, um, and a lot of that credit goes to Dr. Smith and to his senior staff. Who makes sure that, um, they are on top of everything. And as we ask questions, um, uh, we understand exactly. What that looks like and how that all works. So, um, thank you. I, I very much appreciate that. That's it. Thanks.
So Dr. Smith and I did our rounds of the Northern County Schools on the first day of school. Um, Chopticon did have air conditioning, so that was good thanks to the gigantic, uh.
Portable tubes, two portables that are in there, yeah.
So, um. The, uh, it, I mean, you know, I just, I just reiterate everything. I mean, the amount of work that goes into the first day of school. I don't think anyone can truly imagine it. Um, unless you're a part of it. Um, you know, I clearly see it from a parent perspective and, um, you know. All of the moving parts, you just, you, you can't even begin to imagine. It, it all runs very smoothly, hopefully for the student and the parents. Um, as they come through. But there are weeks and weeks and hours of work that go into that. Um, my second comment is, uh, I'm gonna, uh, let's see, give a shout out here to Dr. Mar. And the, um, Blueprint Implementation Committee that we have. I'm on the, it's all good.
Yeah, no.
Um, I'm on the Ad Heart Committee from M A B. Um, we had a meeting yesterday with, um, uh, the Executive Director of P ZAM, Mary Pat Fannin. And, um, her, I guess, blueprint person, which is now Kevin Michael, who just retired from Calvert County and has now been hired by P ZAM. Um, after they left and gave their presentations as to where they felt other counties were and the challenges that they had. And then we were talking, um, we are just far and beyond what a lot of people are, what, where a lot of other counties are. Um, and I think that was probably highlighted by Dr. Smith mentioned to me last week that at the state board. Um, they did do a presentation on the number of students that are in apprentice programs. Which if anyone is knowledgeable about the blueprint, it's college and career ready. So, um. Just so everyone knows, St. Mary's County is number two in the state in students enrolled in actual apprentice programs, right? And the two are not the big counties. It is not Prince George's County, it is not Montgomery County, it is not Howard County or Baltimore City or Baltimore County. It are two rural area counties. So, Washington County and St. Mary's are the two leaders. So, um. You know, that just drives home the fact that e- e- everything we've been talking about, you know, building your own and taking care and. You know, family and as Mrs. Washington pointed out, all the supports, um, you know, that just continues through. And, um, hopefully that will continue to be recognized at the state level as we roll through this blueprint. Um, my third one is just completely personal. I was, um. Had the opportunity to be a passenger on the inaugural sailing of the Dove, um, last, uh, on Saturday. Um, absolutely incredible. Um, it is, the, the Dove was, it's a new Dove that's being commissioned that is now. At the docks at St. Mary's City. Um, the old Dove wouldn't, is not allowed to take passengers out. You can just like walk around it. This one, you can actually go out and set sail. So, um, to come in, they had, um. Like the fireboats and, you know, tons of boats, just people like escorting it in. To, um, into the dock at St. Mary's City. And it was, it was absolutely amazing. So, and we were full under sail. So, I mean, it was, you know, we, we were rolling. So, um, if you do have the opportunity. Um, she is parked down there, docked down there. Um, at this point, they did dedicate it afterward. So. Um, I'm sure it will be on our field trip list for our fourth graders as they go through their, um, you know, their Maryland history curriculum. So, um, but it, I mean, it, it is a beautiful ship. So if you have the opportunity. Um, you know, please get down there and, and see it. So.
I wanna say something.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Jaffers, for escorting me around on the first day that we went out, but it was actually day three.
Yes.
So, um, it was, it was great to all the schools that we went to.
Yeah, I, you know, this, this predates me. I think we've been doing the first day visits for almost twenty years, right? I mean, it.
Yeah, I think it started in two thousand four. Two thousand three, two thousand four.
I mean, it's a big, it's a big leap of faith to roll your board, uh, with your senior leadership and go visit every school. And some of us, we were walking in right behind the kids for the first time. So it's like, the kids are getting off the bus and oh, here comes, you know, the deputy superintendent and. Yeah, um, uh, you know, and again, I think that, uh, we've become a lot more comfortable with that too. So leadership within the building. Understands exactly why you're there, just to share the enthusiasm and support for the first day. And that's, it's, again, I think it's, it's one of the things that makes. St. Mary's County really, really special.
Yeah, we tried not to scare Jamie Copsy on his very first day, um, nor Erin Dorenzo.
Jamie Copsy was at the building at five in the morning when he could see the reporter that came down unannounced to film and to do all of these things. That did not have it cleared. And so Maureen was in that parking lot before six AM and she was talking to me, I mean, like our days started really early. Mr. Copsy is gonna do really, really well.
Yes, yes, he is.
Gonna do, he already has done really, really well. He will continue to do so.
I agree, wholeheartedly. And I was also there before six AM.
Right.
My first day of school visit was to my school.
There you go. You visited, you visited all of your classes. And again, they are very academically aggressively rigorous, yeah.
But bringing it back to like elementary school, I just wanted to, um, say this about this, uh, back to school presentation with all the pictures that you put together, Dr. Mar. Um, this, these couple of pictures of, um, elementary school students sitting on a rug. Um, like listening to their teacher read to them. Oh, gosh, that just brought back so many good feelings because that is absolutely what elementary school is all about.
Yeah, there's, there's nothing better than being a guest reader in, in, in kindergarten. I know Mrs. Washington, that's, that's. Some of her favorite time of the year when we get to go and actually, you know, really share space with all those little. Little bodies and they all nestle up and they're all looking up at you and they're interested and, oh, it's good stuff.
Asking a million questions.
Asking a million questions, right?
Great fun.
It's very nice. All right.
Okay, all right. If no one has anything else, our next board meeting is on Wednesday, September fourteenth. Uh. We will begin at executive session at eight o'clock, but, uh, the actual time will begin at nine. It will be open to the public. So with that, we are adjourned.